Welcome, everybody. It's now the time and place set for the regular February meeting of the Royal Oak Planning Commission. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And the way we start here is we are going to do a roll call, but we need to remember that you have to tell where you're at as well as state your name. So because it's Zoom, I'm going to call people on people, and then they have to introduce themselves and say where they're at. So Mayor Fournier.
Hi, Mayor Mike Fournier here, zooming in from beautiful and vibrant Royal Oak.
Commissioner Douglas.
Charlene Douglas, Royal Oak.
Mr. Klooster.
Eric Klooster from my basement in Royal Oak.
Ms. Beaky.
Anne Beaky in Royal Oak.
Gontina.
Woody Gontina, and I'm in Royal Oak as well.
And our new member, Mr. Curtis.
Yep, Paul Curtis here in Royal Oak.
And I'm Chairman Gary Casada, I'm also in Royal Oak. All right, so on the agenda, there isn't an approval of the agenda on here, but I think we've had this come up several times. So before I move on, I wanted to ask if there are any alterations in the agenda that are being proposed from anybody. So I'm going to take that as an approval of the agenda. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes for January 12th. If everybody's had a look at these, questions, comments, or a motion? Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I'll move approval.
There's a second. Mr. Gontina, seconds. The discussion of the minutes, January 12th. Seeing none, a call for the vote. Mayor Fournier.
Hi.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Klooster.
Yes.
Ms. Beaky.
Yes.
Mr. Gontina.
Yes.
Mr. Curtis.
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so the minutes from the January 12th meeting are approved. Next order of business is whether there's public comment on non-agenda items. Ms. Schwanger, are you there?
Yes, Chairman Casada, members of the planning commission. There were no public comments called in this evening, either for general matters coming before you this evening or for any of the hearings later on.
All right, thank you. All right, so that takes us right to other business, which the first order of business is a sign variance request, number 210203 for the property at 2419 Normandy Road. Mr. Twing, tell us about this, please.
Very briefly, the site itself is across from the Robinson Brothers Development at former Normandy Oaks. It's at the corner of Normandy and Kent. As you indicated, it is a request for a sign appeal. The site itself is not in any particular sign district under the sign ordinance. However, the sign ordinance does allow multifamily residential, certain signs under certain conditions. Basically, the sign ordinance would allow a maximum height of five feet and a maximum area of 25 square feet as long as the multifamily site is, development is on a major. And as long as that development has more than 12 or has 12 or more dwelling units. In this case, the petitioner is proposing a sign of four feet with a sign area of 18 square feet. It is on what's considered a major road. However, the development itself only has seven dwelling units. So the building division did deny their request for a freestanding monument sign. And that is really the appeal in front of you this evening.
All right, very good. Is the petitioner here, looks like, looks like he is.
I am.
Can you introduce yourself and explain to us why you are requesting this variance?
Sure, my name is Mark Zaweta. I am, we can actually probably discuss, there's two of them, and they're both the exact same situation. Would you like to discuss both of them at the same time or just one at a time?
I think they're two separate, two separate. So there may be spillover in the concepts, but we're going to have to vote on it one at a time, so we're going to have to talk about it one at a time.
Fair enough, okay. Are we talking about 2149 Normandy first?
The first one is 2419 Normandy, that's correct.
2419 Normandy, okay. It's, like you said, it's a seven-unit, you know, multifamily ranch-style apartment dwelling. And we've had some challenges leasing it out. We try to send tenants by to see it. A lot of times they'll say they missed it or they can't find it. I own the building over at 4401 Crooks, right around the corner, like walking distance. We have a sign over there, and it's really helped out since we put the sign. It makes it a lot easier for people to see it and notice it. So for obvious marketing purposes, trying to fill vacancies, trying to, you know, keep the property full, just looking for a monument sign. It's a very tastefully done sign, we believe. It's very similar in family to the one I have over at Crooks that you guys approved. And we're putting it, you know, somewhat on the corner so that way you can see it from both the side streets, you know, and on Normandy, you know, going in both directions. So it's, you know, it's not very big. It's, like I said, it's tastefully done, and that's it.
You mentioned, if I, if I may ask a question here, you mentioned about your potential tenants saying they had trouble finding. What about the tenants themselves? Do they, do they have any problem with their guests finding it? Or do you hear, what are your guests, or your guests, your tenants that you have? You have any, you get any feedback from them about wayfinding issues?
We've heard that too. A lot of them are one bedrooms, there's some two bedrooms there. They've had trouble finding it, their guests have had trouble finding it. You know, kind of just, you know, you don't see it, I think, until you pass it maybe, you know, because they are ranch-style. And the addresses aren't very, you know, there's nowhere to really put an address. You know, the addresses are against the building, which, you know, at night, there's no chance of seeing it whatsoever, you know, on the buildings. So it's just, you know, it's just hard to find, hard to see, so that's why we're looking for a sign.
Are there other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Curtis.
Yeah, you mentioned the Crooks Road property. How many units are in that building or that development?
Yeah, great question, there's eight there, so one more.
So I gather then this, this planning commission approved the variance on that building on Crooks Road around the corner. I'm the new guy, so I'm asking the commissioner, is that true?
Yeah, you know, it's probably been three years. I don't remember, but I would assume so, you know, we pulled the permit and everything, so.
I believe Commissioner Douglas had a comment on that.
Yeah, I don't recall approving that. Mr. Twing, does that ring a bell?
Without going back and checking an address, I couldn't tell.
Okay, that's, I understand. I do have another question.
Go ahead.
And the applicant suggested dealing with both properties at the same time, and the chairman suggested not, but I'm going to raise the possibility anyway because we've got two properties right next to each other with a total of seven, eight, nine, 10, 11.
Seven and six, so 13 total.
So, and you own them both?
Correct.
So what if you were to put a sign, I mean, like in between the two driveways, you've got some shrubs there, what if you were to put a sign there dealing with both units?
They're not that, they don't, they don't butt up next to each other, they're...
They're three blocks apart.
Yeah, they're three blocks, yeah.
They're three blocks apart.
I thought yours was the, they were the two adjacent ones here.
Sharon, I, Charlene, I'm sorry. Charlene, that would have been a great idea because then I would only have to purchase one sign instead of buying two $5,000 signs. Yeah, I wish.
Okay, ignore me, never mind.
That was a great idea, though.
All right, other questions for the petitioner?
Yeah. Just a quick question about, I mean, you mentioned the wayfinding hardships with, you know, guests and potential tenants. I mean, clearly today, we're seeing the mainstay of food delivery, Amazon package delivery. It's not your normal UPS or USPS delivery. You have a lot of, you know, hired agents out there in vans and stuff. Can you help explain maybe, you know, what you predict the route to be? People pass the address, they, I mean, I'm pretty sure they're not pulling U-turns in the middle of Normandy, but I imagine they're going into the backstreets, turning around, coming out. You have an idea of the impact potentially, or a theory, the impact on the neighborhoods when people do drive by and miss it?
Yeah, you nailed it. I mean, exactly what you said, it's undue traffic that's just not necessary, you know. So, yeah, I'm sure that happens a lot. Because, yeah, you can't pull over into Normandy, so you're pulling on another street, coming all the way back around. It's just a lot of undue traffic that, yeah, this would solve that problem as well. It's a great thought, I never even thought of that. But if the guests are missing it, I'm sure, you know, Amazon, UPS, DoorDash, yeah. Great point, Mike.
Ms. Beaky, you had your hand up before.
Just a quick question. On the now leasing, you've said that you've had some trouble leasing, but do you find the turnover so frequent that you would need the leasing number on that kind of permanent sign? Because speaking of wayfinding, I'm thinking, wouldn't the address be appropriate on that sign if the addresses are hard to see from the street? Because hopefully you'd have long-term tenants, not short-term tenants, I would think, but...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, that might be a good idea. It's, I never thought of that, putting the address on there or the address, you know, the addresses of what it pertains to. That might be something we consider. We usually tell people, you know, Z on Normandy or Z on Woodland, or whatever the name, but that's, that might be a good idea. I'll talk it over with my sign guide.
Commissioner Douglas.
Apropos of that, I would have to say that defending the delivery vehicle argument is a little tough because they're looking for an address, not for Z on Kent. So Commissioner Beaky's idea of putting the, you know, the street addresses, number 413 through 475, would be much more useful.
Yeah, I agree. Something, something we can definitely consider adding the address on there.
Mr. Gontina.
I just had a clarifying question for Mr. Twing. I just want to make sure I'm understanding everything correctly. As per the ordinance, really the only issue that's bringing both of these signs before us for the variance is related to the number of units at the properties. Otherwise, the signs themselves meet the ordinance, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, that would be correct.
And while we're doing just a minute of clarity, Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes.
It turns out one of the diagrams I had said 10 inches from the sidewalk, but in the text, it said 10 feet from the sidewalk. I think somebody had a little typo in there somehow. We're going to be 10 feet setback, right, from the front?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
I have one more question myself. What, what electrical elements are involved here? The sign is not internally lit, that's what I understand, and that would be prohibited. Are you lighting the sign otherwise with direct lighting?
Our idea was to have maybe, you know, like, if you can imagine, maybe a solar light, you know, that just, you know, attaches to the side of the sign, that hangs over it at night. You know, something like that. Nothing that runs on electricity, because there is no power out there. So maybe just a solar-powered, like, little lamp thing that maybe hangs over it just to give it some light so people can see it at night.
All right, thank you. That's, that's, that's not on the drawing here, that's something that you've yet, you've got to work that out yet. Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I assume the building department will weigh in on the appropriateness of that.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Of course, we can always ask him since he's here, but anything else at this point in time for the petitioner before we have a discussion on our side of the table here? All right. Well, I will bring it back to the commission here for a discussion. And does anybody have further comments? I have one, if you don't. Mayor Fournier.
Maybe I'll kick off the discussion. You know, I think fundamentally, I don't, I don't have an issue, you know, with it. You know, if we look there, there is a row of other apartments in the area. So I think, you know, right there on the strip adjacent to the property, as we discussed earlier, I think having the ability to have some sort of designation from a wayfinding point of view, whether that's a big Z or whether that's an address block. I like the idea of an address block versus, you know, a telephone number. But I understand the telephone number, the marketing element. But if it's truly about wayfinding, you know, I get the need for a monument sign there. It's not, other than the fact that it's seven units over, over 12, you know, I think in this particular case, given the location, given the other apartments that are there as well, and given the fact that it's difficult, and I know exactly, I mean, I drive by there quite a bit, you know, being able to see it on the side, I think it's, it's a strong warrant to say that there are some hardships there. But I think, you know, I'm going to listen, obviously, to my colleagues, but, you know, I don't think it's an unreasonable petition whatsoever.
Hey, any other, I'll go ahead with my comments here. So the fact is that, as Mr. Gontina emphasized there, the only reason this was denied by the department was because of the number of units, seven or six to 12. And so the rule is, the ordinance is, that if you have a big enough, you know, development, you're, you can have a sign like this. And so only the size of the development is, is the variance. However, you know, I drove down there, I'm familiar with the area. There are other monument signs with the Robertson, Normandy Oaks. Now, there's a monument sign adjacent to one of these two properties. There's also from the one we're looking at, well, I don't want to get them confused. From the other property, there is the park, and there is a monument sign for the park. But there are no monument signs on the south side of the street. And this, these developments are actually very nice little developments. I say little because they only have seven, but they're very residential-looking. They're a single-story. One of the properties has very nice trees on it, and it looks just like part of the neighborhood. And maybe that's a problem for the wayfinding, but at the same token, it blends right into the neighborhood. And popping a sign on here will disrupt the aesthetic on the south side of the road. I don't know that that's enough to deny this request, but this is a thought that crossed my mind, is it really, the only thing on the south side of the road that would be related to this is the Capri Apartments, which has a small sign on the side of its two or three stories, or however big it is. So I did have some hesitation about this, but it seems that the purpose of the rule is being served by this request, given that the only difference is the, is the happenstance of the size. If the petitioner came to us with an 11-unit development, I think that would weigh heavily in favor of granting the variance. It's only seven. I would also point out, I don't remember granting a variance for the eight-unit development either, for the record. Those are my comments. Any other comments or motion? Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, taking into consideration everyone's comments, I'll move approval of the request with the provision that the sign include the street numbers of the units in this building.
All right.
Does that a second, Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Right, so we have a second. So the motion is to approve the requested sign variance with the condition that the sign should have the street number range on, on the sign, correct? All right, is there further discussion of this motion? All right, seeing none, a call for the vote, Mayor Fournier.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Klooster.
Yes.
Ms. Beaky.
Yes.
Mr. Gontina.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So congratulations, Mr. Z, you have...
There's one challenge.
Sure.
So this is an unusual property because it's an L-shaped, and it's on both Normandy and, what is it, Normandy and Kent, right? So the addresses, it's not as simple as just saying, you know, 2129 through 2127 Normandy. Because, you know, half the addresses are Normandy, half the addresses are Kent. It's not going to be, I just remembered that, that's why. There's not going to be enough room, you know, we can't state 2129 Normandy, 2129 Woodland, 212, you know. That's going to be the challenge of putting the addresses on them.
Commissioner Douglas.
Well, so if I'm, and I didn't articulate this before, but I will now. The purpose of signage is wayfinding, not marketing. So what we want to do here is make sure people get to the place that they're trying to get to. If I'm going to, you know, 215 Kent, isn't that the address that I'm going to? So it's what, what the sign says on Normandy is, or, yeah, on Normandy is immaterial to my destination on Kent Street.
Okay, is this a compromise? What if I put, because the property has one legal address? You know, let's say it's 4125 Kent. Can we put, you know, just the one, the legal address of the building? And then we can just direct everybody to that building, and then they'll find the unit. You know, once they're there, they can look for the individual units. You know, whatever the legal address, the property has one address. You know what I mean? And that way...
And I see Mr. Gontina had a comment. We may have to get Mr. List or Mr. Twing involved, but if you don't mind, let me hear what Mr. Gontina has to say.
Well, I was just going to address the, the address thing that just came up. I guess I didn't realize that the, the property has its own one single address, and the individual units aren't, don't have their own individual address. With that being said, I would expect that any address information that's put on the sign for wayfinding has to be tied to the legal address of the property just as the US Postal Service would address it. So the petitioner's, I guess, suggestion of a compromise, while I appreciate it, I think actually spells out the, the correct way that we would need to put any sort of numbers or address on that sign.
And, and I would say this, I, they do have different addresses. I went by there, now maybe there's one legal address, but the reason, Commissioner Douglas, when you stated your, your motion, I was careful to say, use the word "range of addresses", because that's what it is. There's a list of, there's a number of addresses. So when I voted for this, my concept was that there was going to be on the sign, a range of addresses. So somebody like, you know, my mom lives in Northville Hills out in Troy, and those signs have the range of addresses on them. So a delivery man looking for it knows that the range of addresses for this street are in here. That's what I had in mind. I don't know why the sign would not accommodate that.
So if I'm going to one of the units that faces Kent, what address am I going to?
For example, one of them is 4125 Kent.
So the addresses are on...
Yeah, each, each unit has its own address. Each unit has its own address by the door. But the property itself, for all seven units, has one address that you guys recognize, if that makes sense.
No, it doesn't.
Ms. Beaky.
I think, I mean, to clarify the legal address issue versus the door address, which it's unusual to me that it's not in an ABC or whatever, but if you put in the number 2419 Normandy Road and look it up, it shows the building. And so if I were looking for the, if I knew I was going to that building, and you put that in, I mean, it does show the whole building, like if you were to Google it and follow the directions. But the question is how you then, finding the door is a matter of then finding the door address. But the street address is actually different, that's very weird. The legal address plus individual addresses.
Yes. So like for two, it's 2419 Normandy. That's what you guys recognize as the legal address, and that's what Google Maps picks up. However, there's six other addresses, technically, you know, on the property next to each door.
Mr. Curtis.
Yeah, so I'm just looking at the public record, and it says, as Mr. Zaweta says, that 2419 Normandy Road is 3,844 square feet of living space, which is clearly divided up into several units, not one huge house. So it seems to me reasonable to say that if you're putting an address on signage, to put that legal, public record-recognized address on that lot of land, and people will just have to figure out which door to knock on after they park.
Well, I just make a comment there. I'm looking at the picture I took this afternoon, and the doors say like 2421, 2423, et cetera, et cetera. The, the addresses are on the building. If you were driving by, you would probably have a tough time picking them up without slowing down. The point of the sign was to have a wayfinding benefit, so somebody driving by would say, hey, there's 2423 Normandy is in that building or in that, on that property. That's what the sign would be for. So again, I, I'm not sure I understand why the range of addresses would not be on the sign. Mayor Fournier.
Maybe just a question, I mean, you know, so what are the number? I mean, we have seven addresses, and how many are on Normandy and how many are on Kent?
Four on Normandy, three on Kent.
Okay, what are the numbers for Kent?
Don't quote me, but I think it's 4123 Kent, 4125 Kent, 4127 Kent.
Okay, is it possible on that block, I mean, just to put, you know, 24, and I, don't quote me on these, I've been trying to pay attention, write them down, but, you know, 2419 or 2423 dash to, you know, 34. So you take care of the Normandy ones, and below it, you put the 40 number, and then to the other one, you don't actually call out Kent or Normandy. You just have the range of numbers on the sign, and whatever driver is heading there is going to drive by, and if they think it's a Normandy address, they're going to see, oh, I see 2444 to 2448, or whatever the four are there. Fine, do we have to call it out as Normandy and Kent? Or can we just put numbers on the sign that, you know, give, regardless if you're going to Kent or Normandy, you see numbers on the sign that match what you're looking for? In a range? No, no, just a thought.
Yeah, I don't know if people understand.
Can I, can I make a comment? Can I jump in and make a comment?
Absolutely, Mr. Twing.
If you want the range of addresses on the sign, I don't think you need to debate it here this evening. The petitioner will just have to figure out how to put them on the sign. That's your condition for approving the sign. You'll have, just have to figure out how to put them on.
That is what we voted on, and that was why I mentioned Mr. List, because I don't think we can change it once we voted on it unless it gets withdrawn. And I'm not 100% sure what the procedure is there, but we have withdrawn it.
You could make a motion to reconsider your prior one, but, and reconsider it, if I'm using the right term, reconsider rather versus rescind, because it's at the same meeting. But if your motion to approve is contingent upon having a range of addresses on the sign, then you don't need to debate it any further. The petitioner will just have to figure out how to put that on the sign.
Thank you. Is there any, any commissioners who want to reconsider? Are we ready to move on? Commissioner Douglas.
So my motion, I made the motion. So, so, Mr. Twing, how did you record that motion?
I recorded it, you approved the freestanding sign with the condition or requirement that it include the addresses.
That seems sufficient to me.
Ms. Beaky.
I was just going to comment, I think that is sufficient. And also with the two sides of the sign, again, there's probably ample space that they're not exactly the same. And so again, I think Tim is giving us the right advice to proceed.
All right, Mr. Klooster, was that a hand or, no? Okay, all right. I'm going to go back to where we left off. Congratulations. Your, your variance is granted with the stated condition. And we're ready to move on to the next signed variance request, which is for, uh, this would be S B twenty-one, zero, two, zero, four, for, uh, twenty-one, twenty-nine, Normandy Road is apparently the official, uh, legal address there for that property. And once again, uh, Mr. Twing, do we have anything to add here or, or not?
Well, it's the same appeal, other than there's one less unit on this site than there was on the prior. So there are six units on this site, uh, versus the seven that were on the prior site. Same issues.
All right. Uh, and the petitioner is here, uh, and I would, uh, but you, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Z, is there anything further you'd like to explain about, about this property or, or is it, is it the same issues?
Exactly the same. I guess I have one question. Can the range of addresses be different on each side for, for the reasons of, you know, space? Can I put like the Normandy on one side and the, you know, Woodland or Kent on the other side? Is that possible?
I, I suppose that you'll, that you'll have to present that to the department, I think, is what Mr. Twing is saying, that, and they'll have to determine if it conforms. I would say that, um, just my, is just speaking for myself. I mean, the addresses are, this is wayfinding. So the addresses, that's what we, that's what we understood, that people have trouble finding it. So the addresses make a lot of sense to put on the sign and that's what we, uh, suggested in the other, or voted on the other one. So, uh, Mayor Fournier.
Yeah, I would just say the way I understood the motion, it's really binary. Are the addresses on there? Uh, yes or no? Um, I mean, certainly that the staff will have to take a, a look at it from other points of view. But I mean, you know, the addresses are included and, and, you know, it's, we understand that it's probably in your incentive and interest to, to try to figure out how to make it still a tasteful sign and how to make the, the numbers useful to people. Uh, so, you know, I don't think it's a prescribed, uh, way, but, um, you know, certainly get a, get a double look from staff, uh, our staff, just to make sure there's not some other obscure ordinance. But I, to me, I look at it as binary, the way we voted on it, that it must include it, zero or one, you know?
All right. Uh, are there any other, uh, questions for the petitioner? Or, um, are we ready to bring, uh, the issue back to the side of the table for discussion and, uh, potential motion? I don't see any hands, so I'm going to, uh, bring the debate back on this side of the table. Uh, obviously it's very similar. We just heard all the pros and cons. Um, and so I will request, uh, anybody who has a comment, please, uh, put them forth or, or formulate a motion, if you will. Mr. Gantina.
I'll move to grant the variance with the same provision to provide the, uh, address numbers on the sign.
Is there a second? Ms. Beaky, is there further, uh, discussion on this issue? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Mayor Fournier.
Hi.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Klooster.
Yes.
Ms. Beaky.
Yes.
Mr. Gantina.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Congratulations. You've, uh, we've, uh, granted the variance and I'm sure that, uh, the final sign will be, uh, inconformance and we look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next order of business is the matter of some potential, uh, community outreach. And Tim, Mr. Twing, could you, uh, walk us through this?
Um, certainly. There were three topics that, uh, staff had left, uh, that we were working on. Uh, those topics were, came out of the Planning Commission's joint meeting with the zoning board appeals. Uh, those three topics are listed there as item three, A, three, B, and three, C. Uh, the first one in regards to lot size, density, off-street parking, and other standards for multi-family dwellings. Um, you may recall that we've written several staff reports that were presented to the planning commission about specific ordinance, uh, ideas and criteria. Uh, where this was left was the planning commission had asked staff to work with the, uh, communication specialists to do some, outreach to the community and find out, uh, get some input with it. Where staff was heading and talking briefly with the communication specialists for the city was at this point, given the current COVID-nineteen and thing, we were going to use a similar method that the, uh, was used in the marijuana outreach, which included a survey, survey questions and things like that. So the first, uh, thing that we brought back to the planning commission was kind of a draft document identifying some potential questions. Uh, again, all related to prior ordinance provisions that the planning commission had looked at. Uh, there were some lead-in narrative material that would lead into what the issues were for each question, uh, to give the reader or the survey person some idea of what was being discussed. And then the potential question, uh, that we would also post, as, as part of that survey. Uh, I, I don't know that I'm going to go through each one of these independently on it. Hope that everyone's had a chance to look at it. Uh, but what we were, as a staff, hoping to get feedback on is, are we heading in the right direction in terms of the approach, the general questions? And so on, or are we way off base where the planning commission thinks we should be going? Uh, so it's kind of, we're, we're hoping to get some feedback, uh, on that. Uh, also, in terms of the overall plan, uh, we, this, now that, uh, communication specialist has had a couple other tasks, um, completed, um, you know, we were going to talk about what other types of state, steps or methods we might use to do some outreach on this, this topic. But the first one was, we started working on potential survey questions and are those questions, is this approach consistent with what the planning commission would like us to go for that outreach? And if it is, uh, we'll refine those. We'd be happy to take, uh, your input either tonight or via, uh, email communications over the next month perhaps and, uh, finalize this with the, uh, communication specialist. What I would say is, uh, the intent of the survey would be to put it out for about a week and a half, get the replies, pull it off, um, shut the survey down for a period of time and then put it back out again for another week and a half. And that's based on, on, on the communication specialist idea that people are even going to get on and, and reply right away. Uh, so to keep it fresh, we'd pull it off and then put it back out to, to get that feedback. Again, I think that's similar to some of the, and I'll use the marijuana, uh, as a, a survey question. Some of the other stuff that we did as part of that was, or she did as part of that was post answers to fre- frequently asked questions. So we may take some of these topics and, uh, post questions that might come out of it with answers to it. So I don't have the whole plan for the outreach, uh, tonight, but before we got too far along, I wanted to see if we were heading in the, the right direction with the type of questions and the format on the survey. Very similarly, very similarly, on the other two topics, we were looking for feedback on those. And I guess I'll stop here. I don't want to overconfuse them and see if what the planning commissions comment are on number A.
Um, just a clarification, you, you use, just now you used the word format, but I, as you were talking, what I got the impression is that these are really the topics and how you've, uh, you know, the, the, some of the information that goes in, some of the imagery that you were going on, but this isn't, uh, this isn't the exact format or verbiage you're proposing. You're, this, this is the topics you're proposing and, and you're looking for feedback. And, and after the, um, communication specialist gets together with you, uh, these are going to change visually and, and in other format ways. You were looking for the feedback as to the topics and the framing of the questions and, and other such things. Do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, the actual format that would hit on the, be out on the survey would obviously change. Um, there are potential questions in here. Those questions are in the, uh, boxes. The, the lead-in prior to those is a, would be a brief explanation of the overall discussion. Um, and then there's narrative, uh, that follows the question as well. So it, there is a potential question in the box that we would have on the survey. And, and we're trying to give some explanation in the narrative of what the topic is and what, what's the background to it, rather than just throwing a question out for someone to try and reply to.
Well, you've got, you've got to have the background and the information for sure. And, and some of the stats are, are quite interesting. Uh, so, um, all right, I, um, I will take questions for Mr. Twing. Uh, Mayor Fournier.
Yeah. And I appreciate this. And I think we're getting to a place where, um, we can start to have some meaningful conversations with our neighbors and friends and, and family in the community about, you know, these, these important topics that, you know, um, affect the future of Royal Oak for sure. Uh, but also help, you know, shape, uh, and adapt to, to, you know, the demographics, both socially, economically, and age-wise that are, that are happening. Um, the, the question, if this is going to go out broader and I, you kind of answered it, Tim, a little bit of before about the communication specialist getting a hold of it. There's just two, two things that, maybe it's advice. Um, one is, you know, the simpler the better. So the, the extent that we can focus on the things that we really want to know and keep that, you know, we don't want, people aren't going to respond to a novel. Or you might get people that, a, a select group of people that respond to a novel that all, all of a sudden creates bias because, you know, they love reading pages and pages and pages of stuff. So I think we want to be cognizant of that and focus on, you know, specific things versus a broad set. The second is, I think, is presuming people understand what some of these terms mean. It'd be interesting to do a few trial runs, um, just to see like, when people see multiple family, I mean, we, we do this. We've been doing this, a lot of us for years and years and years. Um, you know, we know what that means. But to some, multiple families might just mean like, you know, oh, a bunch of houses on a street, many families together. Or what is a setback? You know what I mean? Um, I don't understand what that is. Um, and I know you have some of it in there, but I think, you know, sometimes you may take for granted certain words are, um, known by the general population. And to the extent that we can have a brief education, uh, before taking the survey, uh, might be helpful. That's all.
Right. And, and maybe, maybe that was some of the items that we would put in the frequently asked questions. A lot of people don't understand what a condominium is. Frankly, it's a type of ownership. It has nothing to do with whether it's multi-family, single-family or anything else. It's a type of ownership. So I, I think your, your point is well-taken, uh, mayor. Um, I would think that maybe we would put some of those questions and answers is how we're treating it in the frequently asked questions, uh, portion. Uh, maybe we do that first before we do, uh, the survey too.
Commissioner Douglas.
I think a great deal of storytelling needs to happen here. Um, to the mayor's point, there are a lot of technical concepts that people don't understand. And I mean, I personally think many of, well, many of these questions, I think, require some sort of town hall, a, a very simplified, clear, lots of pictures, explanation of the concepts that we're introducing. Um, it, the benefit being we educate people about, you know, the work that we do and, you know, what buildings look like in the city and how they function. Um, I don't even think a, a frequently asked question is, will be sufficient to help people understand. Um, furthermore, I think there are questions here that are, um, a, a policy decisions. And I'm looking particularly at the community benefits policy. Um, I don't, I mean, I think that's a, that the decision gets made by the people who were elected by the people of our city. I, and I, we definitely would want to tell them what we're planning and invite their feedback. But I'm, I guess I'm not looking for a quantitative survey on that subject. Um, and I know we live in a time of, you know, COVID and no face-to-face meetings, but, um, communities around Michigan, around the country are doing a very good job of conveying information in these digital formats. Um, I think we're capable of that and I think that needs to be done.
Ms. Beaky.
Um, first I want to say that I really appreciate this document. I think it was, I think it's a really good encapsulation, a lot of discussion we have had about different housing types, um, issues that we're, we're dealing with on this commission. To me, this particular document almost seems like a piece of, of documentation that we would use to have a discussion among ourselves to further clarify some of these different analyses we've had done over the years. We've had, we have our smart growth, we've our missing middle, we have, um, our issues of environmental issues, et cetera. And we've had different discussions in this commission about, again, if we continue using PUDs, do we then have a list of things that we would require people to do in order to get those special permissions for different kinds of developments? Um, and I think those clarifications would come, to your point, uh, Ms. Douglas, at, at, at this kind of commission level with recommendations to the city commission. And I'm not sure that we're ready for a survey-type document, uh, uh, on all of these issues and especially not all of them together, because it is a lot. Um, and I'd also like to reiterate that a lot of these would go very much in the context, again, of, of either, either if not doing a new master plan, looking at both our master plan as well as the other, um, important, uh, studies that have been done for Royal Oak about these issues and saying, what performance have we achieved to date? We've had a lot of, uh, built, new buildings, built a, a more multi-family housing. And my question is, if we know we have an influx of four hundred a year from our housing study in two thousand seventeen, but an outflow of nine hundred housing unit in our, in that same state, most are renters. Is the stuff we're building now and the stuff we have existing meeting that population trend? Um, and those are the public. I think we need to understand the good progress we're making in the context of. But I like the document very much in the sense that it's bringing together a lot of what we've discussed. I'm just not sure if we're ready. If you get a yes, no from a person, what mean that they want a duplex on their block, that they don't, um? But I do think this is useful for us to move us forward in those kind of discussions.
Well, what I can do as far as I, the idea of a digital town hall, uh, because I, I do believe Commissioner Douglas is correct. Right now, we, we really can't do the in-person yet, where, aren't set up for it. I would say that, uh, some of the technology in, in city hall is now, uh, getting, uh, upgraded and, and getting to a point where maybe we'll be more, uh, flexible with that in the coming months. Um, the IT department has been focused on getting the police building up and running. So some of the, and because we haven't had in-person meetings, some of the equipment that was in city hall, uh, we really haven't been attempting to use. Uh, hopefully that in the next, uh, month or so will, will be in a point where we could say we can do a virtual, virtual town hall meeting in, in some fashion and we can work through that. Uh, as I said, I really wasn't looking for a yes vote, no vote tonight. I, I just wanted to input on, uh, the, uh, various topics that, that we're going to walk through this evening and see whether you wanted us to continue in this direction. Uh, and, and I did promise that we would be giving you periodic updates on these topics, uh, as to where we're at. Uh, and this is really kind of where we were at, putting questions, potential questions together, uh, for a survey. Now, now if you feel a survey is okay, do you want to do the town hall meeting first? Do you want us to generate, uh, you know, question and answer type things? What, I, I'm getting different messages on what might be the next step for staff.
Mayor Fournier.
You know, I think may, maybe we break it out into pieces too. You know what I mean? Do we have to collect all the info? If there's things that make sense to do together? Um, one, it keeps the attention span of those we want feedback from. People are busy, even in today's age. Um, and that, in a, in a town hall, I think, you know, Judy Davis really has some good ideas about how to, how to you do these in a, in a way that are, are very productive. But, you know, Tim, you, you do have movie star qualities. Um, you know, you could do like a. You know, you could do like a, a five minute, 10 minute intro, or, you know, maybe, you know, Eric do it, you know, come in as a guest or Commissioner Douglas, but just kind of, or, or make it, it shouldn't be, it should be completely remotely apolitical, maybe no elected or appointed people, but somebody that says, okay, this is, this is what this is. You know, here's the, here's the five minute explanation with little widget drawings and all that stuff that show, what, what are we talking about here? And then, you know, they're prefaced with that, and then boom, they're ready to, to answer a few survey questions. And then that one goes away. And then maybe you throw the fence fund up there, you throw, you know, at a later time. So I don't know that we have to build this road overnight. We should have a path and a plan. But I, you know, let's, it might, it might save a lot of trouble. I mean, it might take you 30 minutes to do a quick five minute video, but it might, might be worth it. And then it's always there. Anytime someone has a question, here's a great FAQ video.
Well, I guess would the, would the commission be open in to bringing in someone from the outside to actually do the, the presentation? So it is not a city staff member that people may think it's biased?
Right. I would check with the MML. I bet you they have these resources already set up for some extent.
We'll see what we can, we, I'll see what we can do with that on this topic. And I'll talk to IT and the communication specialist about when we might be ready to do some sort of town hall meeting on this topic. The other two topics I didn't think were going to rise to the level of outside input. When we get to those, we can, I, I think those are pretty straightforward from what you may or may not want to do as a planning commission. But this one, I'll get you more information and we'll get an outline together and bring that back in March. And it still will be in our prior discussed timeframe of about three months to getting to this and having a plan together. If that's okay.
Ms. Bickie.
I guess I want to, I want to clarify among my peers here. When we gather this information, we're, we want to use it just, it, it's a temperature check to kind of hear from people. Again, or we want to report to them what we have been doing. Do they like it? I mean, what are, what are we intend to gather it?
You froze there. And you, Ms. Bickie, can you repeat that last comment?
I, I'm just, I just want to reiterate, I want to reconfirm for myself, what do we intend to do with this input once we get it? Once we get it, I, I, I think we should hear from citizens, and I'm glad to hear from them, but I'm, I'm, I want to understand what, what we want to do with the information.
Well, we, for me, for my, I would use it to deliberate on the pros and cons of the question before me, and it would be part of the input. So we also know, you talked about taking a temperature. We know the temperature is, is elevated. There are a lot of people very passionate about these, these issues that we're, we're talking about now with, with housing and, and some of the issues in housing. We know that there's, there's people out there are very passionate. And so I'm going to just make a couple of quick comments here. I like the idea of a town hall. I like the idea of simple surveys. I like the idea of using this to talk among ourselves about it. But I also think when it comes to making the presentation, the outreach to the, to the public, we, we have some experience, but our communication specialists also have some experience, and they may also want to draw on people like somebody from the ML, MML. I think that we consider having Judy Davis come before this commission and have that chat with, with her, because we're not the specialists in that. Some of you might be, I'm not. So we might want her input. So I would just say that when it comes to the presentation, for us to make the decision about how we're going to do the outreach without Judy's input doesn't seem to be very prudent. I think we need to hear from her on, on that. But substantively, the issues are what this commission has to consider for our recommendation to the city council. And the only thing I would say is, yeah, there's a lot of good information in here. I'm familiar more, this is legislation, it's an ordinance. Up in Lansing, what they do when they have a proposed piece of legislation, they, they put out something called the Legislative Analysis. And what they do that's a little different than what Tim has done here is they may include a bunch of this sort of technical information. But they also include sort of the pros and cons. The question is posed is what is the problem that is being solved here? And what are the positions? Some people make this argument, some people make this, this is why they want the changes, why they don't want the change. I think that would also be something important for, for me to hear. Some of these issues are abstract to me. I don't know what the real life implications of it. Why are people seeking to, to make these changes in other communities or in our community? And why are people pushing back? What are the, what are the pros and cons? I personally would appreciate that. Some of that will get in the outreach. So those are my comments. Commissioner Douglas.
Well, I do think we might want to go through these issues and see which are actually relevant to public input. I mean, and I'll, I'll use as an example, allowing three-story buildings with ground floors that have a ceiling height of more than 10 feet. I mean, we've consistently seen across Royal Oak for the past, I don't know, 10 year, five years at any rate, that modern standards say that a 30-foot limit on those buildings is, does not meet contemporary demand, market demand and, and development standards. So do we need to put that out before the, the public? I mean, what if people say, nope, nope, you've got to limit it to 30 feet? When we, as, as, you know, knowledgeable leaders in our field know that that's that we'll spend the next five years giving variances to people who want to build a 35-foot tall building.
Well, I just responded to that in, in, to pick up what I, what I said about the other thing. My understanding is a lot of the times he's, the reason they want to be more than 30 feet is because they want to put the garage on the first floor, because they got to find parking on our infi, on infill properties here in our developed, you know, Royal Oak. So if you're going to put, if you're going to be able to put parking on the development, you put it on the first floor and you stack the building on top of it. That's to me, the main issue there. Other people may feel differently, but if you present it that way, you're going to, I think, get feedback that's appropriate. People will also understand if that's really the issue, then maybe the 30-foot limitation becomes, it becomes more clear why it's a problem other than saying they don't meet modern standards or, or contemporary standards. That's again, that's very abstract and, and you, you understand it. And, but not everybody will understand that without under, you know, the, the, the practical, the practical application. So that's what I'm saying. But we can go through these if you'd like. I think they're all interesting topics. So any comment on that? Would, would, would people, would the commission be open to walking through these one at a time at this point? That's the proposal. About this, any objections to doing that? All right. Well, I don't see any. So Commissioner Douglas, we're going to, we're going to do this and we'll, we'll, we'll try to do it efficiently. So the first topic here is the minimum required lot size for the multifamily housing. Are there comments about, about this?
Yeah, I think that's a question we should pose. I think it's, um, I mean, it's, you know, we're seeing multifamily as a need here for a lot of reasons, as we have an aging population. And, you know, how, these are often adjacent to neighborhoods. How do you want it to look? You know, I think we got to show, you know, the trade offs. You know, right now with smaller lot sizes, you know, you get this. With bigger lot sizes, you get this, you know, or density. I'm not speaking correctly right now, but you get my point. So, um, yeah, I definitely think it's one that we should pose.
Yeah, I think, Commissioner Douglas.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that the, the lot size issue here would provide green space. It's sort of, things kind of work against each other here because it also depends where, because the, the extra square footage would provide green space in these developments. And a lot of the developments say, well, I can't put green space, it doesn't work. And indeed, if, if it's a infill property near the downtown, that may make all sorts of sense. But if it's farther out in the community, what you're doing is you're giving, you're giving up your opportunity to do, you know, provide green space and, and permeable surfaces and other things that we also like. So there are pros and cons of this. I think it's a difficult topic. I think that the public input would be helpful. Commissioner Douglas.
Well, and I'll just add, as the staff has reported to us, the, many of the multifamily developments that are scattered around our city are already non-compliant here. That is, we would be, and we can, we can show that to people, that we will be bringing many properties into compliance along the way.
Yes. All right. Any, any other comments on minimum lot size required for multifamily? Is that a hand, Ms. Bickie?
I was going to say, I agree that we need input on it. I do think for any of this, it's the three dimensional, dimensional perspective that's important so that people can see and visualize and see examples from the community. And also, um, and also, again, every neighborhood is different. And again, that's why we do have the zoning. But again, when it's the flat zoning, the old fashioned zoning, it's hard for people to visualize that. And so, again, each of these topics just would have to be treated lightly. And I think a town hall is a, a more effective way to have that kind of discussion with the visualization and such.
All right. All right. Next topic. Revised setbacks required in multifamily zoning to be consistent with the setbacks required in mixed use and commercial zoning. And, and here there is an illustration that shows some of the issues there. This, this one, again, to me, needs, needs to be flushed out with what are the practical pros and cons and why people advocate for it or advocate against it. Other comments? Anyone? I saw, I saw Mr. Klooster shake his head no, so he's not going to say anything on this. All right. Next topic is the reducing the number of parking spaces required for multifamily. We've seen this come up over and over again. It's been discussed many times, and the statistics are quite interesting.
Missed one. The, the question to to encourage more housing, should, should we revise setbacks to make multifamily consistent with commercial? You skipped.
I, I did bring that up, but.
Oh, then what, then what about the duplex one?
Oh, did I miss one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe the duplex one is.
I'm sorry. You're right. I did. Sorry. I did miss the duplex one, so we'll go back to that. The, the question there is also about this, the lot size for the duplexes. And I have to admit, I've not only missed it, I'm, I'm not familiar with this issue very much. So somebody else can comment on it.
Well, I do think this is part and parcel of the one we just talked, the one before that.
Yes.
In, so, change setbacks for multifamily and change setbacks for duplexes.
Okay. Well, this is, this is lot size, but.
Agreed. But still, similarly appropriate.
They're, they're similar. Okay. So now, now we go flip the page to the lots, to the setbacks. The setback issue was for multifamily zoning. And whether these setbacks should be consistent with the mixed use and commercial zoning. We want to do that or permit that for multifamily. And I don't know if that's going to be different in different zones, but there's an illustration here showing showing one of the points here. Comments about this issue? And I think, I think that this, it would, it would help to hear about some of the practical pros and cons that people advocate for on, on these things. All right. Next issue is, should we, this is, this is the parking space issue that I was yapping about here. Yes. And we've seen this many times. Any comments? Mr. Cantina.
Well, I just would say that this is a great example of, I think, why it's important to have all these in front of the community together. Because as you pointed out earlier, you know, discussing this parking issue and its impact on buildings may help the community understand the 30-foot height restriction issue a little bit better. So, you know, to, if you were to separate them and maybe not talk about one in a community forum versus talking about both of them together, I think to get the proper input back from the community, it's important to have both these topics discussed, even if they're going to be discussed separately.
I think that's a good point. And, yes. Mayor Fournier.
I think there's another one where you highlight the trade offs, right? You know, less parking means more green space. You know what I mean? More parking takes away from green space. I mean, it's, you know, I think important to, to, to talk about, you know, the continuum of decisions that we're faced with here. And what's more important on that continuum? That, you know, you, just another example of one.
Yes. And this one, we often hear from the petitioners who come to us that they, one of their arguments is, hey, the market drives this. I'm putting my money up, I'm investing in this building, I'm putting my, you know, business at risk. And I'm doing, I only need this much parking because I know my market. And I don't know if that always pans out or not, but that's the argument we hear. And then, of course, we hear from the neighbors who say, yeah, people are parking on my street. So I don't know how that pans out, but that, that's what we hear anyways. Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, there are communities that have reduced parking require, eliminated parking requirements completely. I mean, they've gone to developers and they've said, you know, build what you, what the market demands. And I, we could introduce that idea in a discussion on this subject.
Mr. Klooster.
Yes. As someone who deals with this regularly on the daily, they won't, you won't build a project that doesn't have adequate parking. Banks won't finance it, developers won't build it, it'll never happen unless there's enough parking to satisfy those people. So I tend to agree that minimum parking standards are futile and really tend to just end up with empty parking lots, surface parking lots that could be substantially better used as stormwater management or pedestrian activated spaces like the surface parking is kind of a killer for, for cities. And so minimum requirements, really, they, they just end up with access most of the time, I think.
Mr. Mayor, did you, or, or Ms. Bickie? Oh, you're on mute still.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you. As the time goes on, I can't remember what, between the difference between mute and unmute. Um, was I going to say, oh, again, going back to our 2017 Smart Growth Report and some of the other documentation we've had, bike parking should be in the mix on, on parking requirements discussion. Because again, while I've, I've said that many times, that it should be added. Again, and parking maximums is the way things are going. Not parking minimum. So I agree. But I would like to see bike parking in the mix.
All right. That'll be a good topic when it gets discussed, I'm sure. All right. Next one we have is the reduce the lot width and side yard setbacks for single families on corner lots. And there's a lot of funky shaped properties on corner lots. So this, I don't understand all the ramifications of this, other than I walk around the city and I see these, these lots, but so this one probably needs some, some illustration. If I understand it correctly, is that these, when people want, the houses on the, on the lots is not a problem. It's when people want to redo these lots, Tim, is that, is that usually what happens? And they want to, they want to redevelop the lot?
Well, there's a variety of things. I, I think Mr. Curtis and his expertise at the zoning board of appeals could probably tell you all the issues the zoning board sees on, on these corner lots.
Well, I'd be happy to speak to it. I, I don't know that I'll hit all the issues, but certainly, you know, if you've, we have all over the city of Royal Oak, corner lots that are non-conforming. So they constantly come before the ZBA because if a row of houses on this side street have this setback, but that corner house is on this other street, it's going to violate that setback of these other houses almost 100% of the time. And so to treat the corner. And so to treat the corner lots with, as its own animal seems sensible to me as opposed to asking the corner lot to not be a corner lot and fit in with the side streets, which seems unrealistic in our town.
All right. Thank you. That'll be interesting as well. All right. Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, there are, so there are, and this is sort of part and parcel of the third item in this section, the per maximum permitted fence heights, because that's really where it comes up at the zoning board, as we learned in our joint meeting and as I have subsequently learned, is that, you know, the place where it really comes up is when somebody wants to build a six-foot fence when their corner lot setback is not, is, does not allow it. So and, and I think we need to look at how often it happens that the corner lot that, that this, the how do I put this? There are some streets where this is common. That is, you've got streets facing, let us say, link, or houses facing Lincoln, and you go around the corner and the rest of the houses on the cor, the adjacent street face that adjacent street. But it's far more common around the city that those houses are, are, are back up to each other on parallel blocks. So I think there might be an opportunity for a different treatment of different types of corner lots. This may not be the big deal that it is. And I know this because I had a long conversation with the chair of the zoning board just the other day. But a change in setbacks could eliminate the whole question about fence heights. I mean, if we allow five yard, five foot setbacks on corner lots as we do in internal lots, then you don't have to worry about, you know, ar, arguing about fence heights.
All right.
Which is a long way of saying worthy of discussion.
All right. Mr. Guntina.
Well, so this particular item here was one that I, I guess I questioned whether it needed to go to the survey, only because with all the information that's been provided and a lot of the great discussion that we've had about it, it does seem like the treating these corner lots like any other lot, we've sort of already demonstrated, it seems to be sort of unusually restrictive for these lots or unusually difficult for these lots to deal with. And that's evidenced by all the, the applications that come before the ZBA for relief. So this is one where I, I, you know, I guess I question whether we can just deal with it internally, because it seems like we have a lot of data that's already sort of pointing us in a certain direction. And if it's one less thing that we have the cloud, the public discussion with in relation to everything else that we're, that's on the, in this report.
I would, I would only add that I think it would be good to do the pros and cons first, where, where, where it came from, and then, and then move from there. Beside the setbacks and beside the fence, you, the lot widths come up as an issue, whether it's a 60-foot corner lot as required or something less than that. There are a lot of issues on the corner lots, and I, I think we probably should do the pros and cons before you throw it out. We do get complaints from neighbors where their house does face this side street and someone wants to build a garage or a house out in front of where their front yard setback is. So I, I wouldn't, I, I would suggest not totally throwing it out yet as far as a discussion topic.
Right. Thank you. Any other comments on, on this one? I'm gonna flip the page. This is certainly gonna be a little bit of a hot topic. Is should Royal Oak require conditions such as green infrastructure, affordable housing, streetscape, recreation areas for housing projects with a density greater than is, is allowed in multifamily zoning? So I think the question here is for projects of a certain size, do we want to add additional mandates, requirements that address these, these issues? So I don't I don't know where all these particular things, like streetscape elements, whatever. I, I don't know where these came from, Mr. Twing, in, in terms of feedback. Did we give those to you or those, how, how did these, these issues come up? Just experience or what?
I, I think they have come up in discussion items as far as when, when a project is going forth through planning special land use approval or, or a PUD, what, what elements? What's the community benefit? Why are you approving the PUD? It has a provision in there. Why are you granting them more density? The commission has talked about the community benefits list, and I believe Commissioner Douglas indicated that's a policy issue more than a another issue earlier. So I'm not sure whether he wanted to leave this in, but, but these topics have come up as part of several of the larger projects in terms of what's the benefit to the community of allowing them greater density, more commercial space, less parking? What, what, what's the, what's the benefit to the community of doing so? And, and what is the list of acceptable items that the community would accept as community benefit?
Okay. So that's not necessarily an exhaustive list. It's, it's
Ideas.
That have come up. And I think that if we were gonna make some sort of a, an ordinance, we'd want to telegraph to people some of the things that they may be asked to include in their project. That would be efficient. So Commissioner Douglas.
So the city commission has already directed, directed city staff to develop, to draft a community benefits ordinance that would address some of these issues, you know, for, and, and that's all it is. It's a very broad statement, asking staff to research and discuss it. So I think that's gonna be on a timetable, perhaps parallel to our other discussion, and certainly will get the exposure and, you know, public hearing and, and comments that it deserves. So I guess I'm just inclined to pull this out of this already busy agenda and acknowledge that's gonna be addressed somewhere else.
Ms. Beaky.
I'm just curious, is that from the city commission level, is that one, community benefits generally or specifically related to these kind of buildings?
Um, well, specifically related to, or, or generally related to development, real estate development. It, it could be residential, it could be commercial, it could be big. I'm certainly, you know, there'll be a, a size definition as to where these benefits become relevant in my, in my view.
Mr. Guntina.
So Commissioner Douglas, so would the, the relevance of a community benefit, or sorry, the importance of a community benefit be relevant to areas other than real estate development? In terms of the way that you've directed staff and some of the reasoning behind what they're doing?
No, it's pretty much real estate development. But, but, but what do you have in mind? I, you know?
No, I was actually, I was curious, because that's kind of what I thought as well. But I thought, oh, maybe there's something else I'm not aware of that, you know, we would want to apply some sort of a community benefit to, but I, that I wasn't thinking of. So I was thinking the same thing. It's primarily just real estate development.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Yeah, I, I, I think, Mr. Curtis.
Yeah, I guess I just would agree with Commissioner Douglas and, and considering this as its own, it's a big piece. And like you said, it's a pretty complex set of discussions without that one, right? So it may make sense, just feedback wise, to try to deal with that, you know, not all at the same time and, and, and a whole campaign of trying to do public education and get feedback. And it's just a lot going on all at once. So makes sense to me.
All right. And if I understand this, this is when we approve a, a PUD and, and we grant a waiver from a standard that would otherwise apply, the community, the concept is community should get something back for that. What is, if I'm gonna, we're gonna waive this, what's the countervailing benefit to the community? And so the, the commission can, can, in, in, you know, institute those conditions in the hearing, but this would be sort of providing more guidance on what community benefits that we think are gonna be appropriate. And again, letting the developer know, if you come here and you ask for a, a, a variance or waiver from a, a standard that would otherwise apply, we're gonna expect that there's gonna be a trade-off. That's what we're talking about here. So, okay. All right. The next topic is, should the city raise the billing height standards in multifamily, mixed use and commercial zoning to accommodate three-story buildings with ground floors, ever seeing the height of 10 feet? So this is a issue that is, is, is more than just residential. It also is about commercial buildings. Tim might need to explain this to me a little more, or?
Well, I, I, I think this is an issue that the planning commission and the community should get into, simply because I'm gonna point back to the original revision of the master plan, as well as the zoning ordinance that came out of that master plan back in 2001. The 30-foot height requirement that's in every zoning district simply was arrived at because that was the maximum height allowed in single-family residential. That's where it was driven from. It was driven from the community input at the time that, you know, we had some projects that were going in adjacent neighborhoods or on the edges of neighborhoods that were taller than that. If you look back at the old ordinance, the heights prior to that draft or that adopted ordinance in 2001 roughly, there were different height standards in different zoning districts. And the 30-foot height that got applied across the board simply came from that was what single-family homes are allowed to build. So to me, it's a not well-thought-out standard, irregardless of whether you have 10 feet on the ground floor or not. It's just a
You're not gonna have too many commercial buildings that don't have 10, 10-foot floors.
Right. Right. But I'm saying the 30-foot height standard is the real issue. It's the real issue that, that we're seeing is, if you want to allow a three-story building, it's not gonna get built in a, with a 30-foot max limit. And those are the variances that you've constantly seen, 36 feet, you know, 34, 38, some of those. And, and it's, some of it's tied to the first floor height, but it, it's really just a, a, a 30-foot standard as a max. It's just frankly not well-thought-out.
Commissioner Douglas.
Well, yes. So the question is not, I mean, we're not, we don't need, this is not the question we're asking. We're not asking people about ceiling heights of 10 feet. We're asking about what is the, how high should buildings be in our city?
In, in, in various districts, correct? Mr. Kloster.
Yeah, I, I think maybe a better way to frame the question to the public is story, number of stories. I think, you know, 30 feet sounds taller than it actually is. 30 feet is a two-story building, where I think it's just typical kind of pedestrian-focused development standards are three to five stories is an appropriate scale for pedestrian comfort. So I think that's, it's, I think it's, it's an easier way to help the public weigh in in a way that's meaningful other than just, that's too tall. I don't want that.
Yeah. But that's, that's a good comment that, indeed, I, I myself conceive it easier in terms of stories. But, all right. Ms. Beaky.
I was gonna say, related to this, and again, with the discussion and getting input, that, you know, the higher stories in different districts or different zones versus being right next door to a building. I think that, you know, again, these ideas of buffers between the pure residential and the more, the taller areas, it's also something important for people to understand and for us to take into account, because I, I often see, it's when the single-family house protecting that kind of neighborhood feel is, I think, where we run into the biggest problem. But it's interesting to hear that that prior to 2000, that that was a very different thing. So I think I agree. This is a good one to discuss.
Mr. Guntina.
So I just wanted, I guess, reiterate what Mr. Kloster said. I think this is a prime example of how we need to make sure that we ask the question in a way that's easily digestible in the community or, you know, easily understood by folks in the community. And another great example of, you know, a very important topic, that it's important that we have a discussion and engage back and forth with the community on, because one, you know, with, what Mr. Twing just pointed out and sort of where the 30-foot requirement sort of originated from, I think would be good for people to understand that, because if they didn't have that base of knowledge, they would simply maybe think, oh, we're, we're, we just want to make things taller without having a baseline level of knowledge of what it really means. But then similarly, the, the, the 10-foot statement in here, I don't think the general public sort of understands how, you know, a, a building is built, so to speak, in terms of what your, your elevation and, and ceiling had on that first floor, how it affects the rest of the building and how it starts to impact that building height and usable floor that you can then build within that envelope. So this is another, you know, really important topic where I think it's gonna take a fair bit of effort on our part to make sure that the true question we want the community to weigh in on is, is understood by them so that we can get the right input.
All right. Very good. Any other comments on, on this topic? All right. The next topic is, should Royal Oak allow more housing in office and commercial zoning? And this is one of the comments here is that several projects have sought to have property rezoned to allow housing without commercial in, in, in these zones, and that we have approved them. I don't remember which examples those are, but that's.
Well, I can real quickly. What the real issue is, the way that, the way some of the zoning district provisions are written now, is that you can have housing above a commercial use.
Right.
Out of, a lot of the projects that you've approved aren't, aren't putting commercial uses on the ground floor. They want to either put parking on the ground floor, residential above. Some of those are, are like the billing site, the former billing site. The former chuk button site. They're putting a little bit of commercial out front, along the street front to try and meet this requirement. And, or is it more important, perhaps, at the residential? If it comes to the ground floor, so it's not a, a row of parking, because I, I think the issue that, that we're trying to avoid is a stilted building similar to ones that are on the northwest corner of 11 Mile in Maine, where it's just a clear view of parking. I think that's the real issue on, that we're trying to avoid, not whether it's residential coming down, like the condos that are on West 11 Mile, the townhouses, those, those are right on the ground. This provision that, that's in there is in some of the zoning districts. You can only do it, do residential if you're above commercial. So.
Okay, yes.
And I think it says, other than parking. So it, it's, is that really what we're trying to address? Or are we simply trying to keep it from being a stilted building?
Yeah. And, and also another aspect is, I'm glad that you, you gave that, because as I read this, I didn't think about those type of develops. Wasn't where my, my head was at. Now I understand. This is also an issue is we've, we've asked people to say, hey, if you want to put this development here, put some commercial on the ground floor, and what the developers tell us is, if you make me put the convert, commercial on the ground floor, I've gotta add way more parking than under the parking requirements, then I can fit and make this a viable project. So it's sort of pushing, sort of a tug of war between those things. If we put commercial in, we, we require them to put parking, you know, a space for every 200 square feet or whatever it is. So that is one of those things. It's hard to, it's hard to find the project that, that works with that requirement. So, Ms. Beaky, and then Mr. Kloster.
Actually, let Mr. Kloster go first, because I want to hear what he's gonna say.
Mr. Kloster.
So, ground floor commercial in central business district is desirable for pedestrian activity, for urban activity, for, you know, just getting people moving on the street. For pedestrian activity, for urban activity, for, you know, just getting people moving on the street. I think the message that we consistently hear is that it's not desirable enough from a market standpoint. To work in these developments and when we push against parking going all the way up to the street. We tend to end up with token little, you know, either a, a gym or some sort of small amenity on the ground floor to kind of make us feel better about. Not letting parking going up to the, to the street frontage. I think. Our density standards. Walk up residential is honestly a, a great fit for our community. It can, it's not going to get the same level of activity that a. A commercial frontage would, but it does get pedestrians on the street if, if you have your walk up entrances on that street frontage. So, you know, on Main Street, does that make sense? Probably not. On Washington, yeah, it probably makes a ton of sense. So I think those are, it's. It's one of those things where the ordinance is written with good intent. And it's, it's almost like it needs a, like a finer, more granular examination of. Where it's, not only where it's desirable for the community, but where there's potentially a better market for it. And, and we can kind of, I think, maybe fine tune some of the ordinance that way where we, we encourage. The, some of these developments in. In areas where they, where they make a lot of sense and we don't have people that. Because all the time you'll, you'll see if, do a feasibility study and you'll look through the ordinance like we. We can't make this work just based on the ordinance and it never gets past that. So if we, if we have the options available where this can start to make sense to developers, then I, I think there's, there's opportunities there.
All right, Ms. Beiki.
Um. Cause that was interesting that why, and I learned something there with the word walk up residential. I think the walk up residential again, where the doors are at the sidewalk level. And again, as I keep saying, there's a green space buffer. That's equally as good to me as the commercial being on the first floor in the sense of the pedestrian access. And then the other thing, so I think again, this, this, the way this is being asked needs to be nuanced a little bit, what that means about. The housing in office and commercial and where that would be. And in Roelo to me in those places, especially along Woodward, like the Beaumont whole big installation of businesses as well as like when we think about where Meyer is located. We, not Meyer, is that the right, yes, Meyer. Um, you know, we have room for even high rise residential in, in more intense in those kinds of commercial areas, in my opinion, transit oriented development. That's places where there should be bus stops and such. And that's very different than that walk up residential, which would fit in like at the downtown and that sort of thing. And I don't know, again, if we're going to start getting into form based code, but that's where some of that could be helpful. So, so my point is the walk up residential versus something that would be a bigger housing type complex, you know, and more. Okay, suburban is not the right word, but it's, with that kind of a strip kind of development are two different kinds, I think, that both fit in with this, in this question, so that it needs to be separated. Or, or both explained, I think. Anyway.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on this one? All right, flip the page. This is a policy issue. Should Royal Oak encourage more quote unquote? First, there's an illustration there that Tim has provided us that, that tells you what that is. That is, that is definitely a policy issue. Comments? Commissioner Douglas.
Actually, I think the preceding one, this one and the following one, which says should Royal Oak allow duplexes or triplexes in single family zoning? I think this is all part and policy of a major or part and parcel of a major policy discussion. About housing in our community and housing demand in not just Southeast Michigan, but in America today. There is a housing shortage really across the board. And so I, I don't necessarily. See us asking these three questions so much as I see us educating people about. The changing demand in housing, the changing demographics that are driving that demand and the forms that may accommodate that demand. And I see Paul a- almost hurting himself, nodding his head.
Yeah, I just, sorry, jump in. I. Think about ninety nine percent full in the Midwest when it comes to. This more affordable spaces in our, in, in just the sort of space our town is, you know, dying for. So anyway, yeah, it's a big policy discussion on all of these topics.
The other comments on missing middle. All right, I'm going to flip the page and Commissioner Douglas just mentioned this is that is, should we allow, should Royal Oak allow more duplexes or? Triplexes in single family zoning? I think that there's probably a lot of the public out there wants to say something about that, but it's, yeah, yeah, that's a policy issue too. Any comments?
Well, I guess I would ask the question is that from a policy, is the indication then that these last two questions wouldn't be something we would. Put out in a survey that we'd treat differently and simply address during a town hall meeting as an educational item? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
To that and say that the previous question about the missing middle is a broader question. This question about duplex and triplexes is a very specific issue to me that is that people will want to. Respond to if you, if you say, should we encourage more mission, uh, missing middle? Housing, people might say, yeah, that sounds good, but they might not. Perceive it the same way. If you say, oh, that means you're going to have a triplex in your single family neighborhood possibly. So I, I think this is much more specific question here. Commissioner Douglas.
Oh, but triplexes and duplexes are missing middle housing. I mean, they're part of that same discussion. Now where they're located, I agree. Whether they're, you know, permitted in what we now call single family neighborhoods is a separate. Issue, but it's all part and parcel of the missing middle topic.
Yeah, I think, I think if you're going to make a policy. That we're going to encourage to missing middle, then there's a cascading set of activities that has to follow on to effectuate the policy. And if this is one of them, then so be it, then it. It flows from it. All right. I'm going to go ahead and flip the page just to keep things moving along here because this one, I think we had a big discussion about. Should Royal Oak allow accessory dwelling units being granny flats, garage apartments, et cetera, for more people than just senior citizens? And there's, there's a couple of layers to this issue, but any comments on this one? Understand that from our previous discussion that an accessory dwelling unit can be in an existing house. And there is a provision for that. And I think Mr. Twing told us, nobody's ever asked for a permit for one of those. It probably exists, but nobody ever asked for a permit. Mayor Fornia.
I think this is going to be an interesting question to pose to the public. I mean, certainly from an execution point of view, the devil's in the details and, and that's our job as planning commissioners and as city commissioners, but. You know, the fundamental question for me, you, you see a lot of trends, especially with people working from home, maybe wanting, you know, some studios as far as an accessory dwelling building. Aging in place, you know, having a trusted loved one or caregiver living near you or, or conversely. Having the ability to have an, an aging parent or family member move into the, into the granny flat or whatever. I think that some of these rules might have been made back in the day when there was a, a fear in general. About certain things and certain types of people moving into, in the community. And I, and I hope we're above that as a community. You know, those fears and, and, you know, we are an inclusive community. So I think, you know, that aside, there's a practical ask to the, to the neighborhoods. Do you want? You know, the ability to, you know, have this option to that kind of, honestly, it's a question to ask because of the trends that are taking place in the economy and in demographics right now. I mean, to me, I think it's a perfect question to ask.
Mr. Cluster.
I, I do think it's a good question to ask. I think the way the ordinance is written right now, I think your aging family member. Could move into an accessory dwelling unit on your property. I think the way it's written right now. I think.
Or plumbing or one of the two. There's a building thing in there, but yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's structured such that only a family member, like you could only do this for a family member. And I think some of the, some of the broader discussions that we're having around affordability, around density, aging in place. Like this is a potential. Response to a lot of those things. I think if you just ask, if you, if you flat out ask the question like, should we, should we allow accessory dwelling units? I think you'll get mostly negative responses because people will imagine apartments being built in their backyard. I, I think a lot of these questions, they. They almost need to be supported by, why are these being considered? Do you support accessory dwelling units as a solution to increasing affordability? Providing options for. Housing for senior citizen, like, kind of like run through like, hey, do you support this? As a solution to some of these things that we're trying to address in our housing stock. And I think you'll, you'll, you'll stir some people to think beyond just the fact of, I don't want an apartment in my backyard.
Mr. Curtis.
Yeah, I'm just reading the draft here and it says it's, it's only. For aged, aging family members, right? As, as it's currently written. And as you're talking about changing demographics and you're talking about. Stifling student debt and so forth, and the kids who grew up in this community not being able to afford to live in this community. But families could provide something as a stepping stone and so forth. So affordability is not just for old people anymore. Affordability is for young people too. So I think it's an important point.
Eric, the mayor had a comment and then I'll come back to you. Mayor, you had your hand up.
I was just gonna say, I agree with Eric as far as like, you got to frame it up like this isn't just like. Opening up a market or, you know, capitulating to landlords or something. That has nothing to do with it. I mean. You know, all these things, whether or not the property has to be owner occupied and all of that. But I think it does merit because right now I, I know because we looked at our garage and I said, well, you know what, maybe we, we set this up to where. You know, my dad passes away and she needs a caretaker. There's no way we could do it. Because you can't get the utilities out there. You can only pick two out of three utilities. So even though it may allow for the attachment to a house. Eric, but like an accessory dwelling building, like a garage or a studio. I could only have electricity and plumbing or heat and electricity, but you couldn't get all the basic living things that you would need to make that dwelling habitable either for work. Or for the care of a family member or like Paul mentioned, maybe you got some kids out of college that took a noble profession to be a teacher and they ain't making any money. And, you know, maybe they could live at home in the accessory building for a little bit and take care of, of, you know, an aging parent while they, you know, save up some money to buy a house in Roelo. So there's a lot of, um. I think advantages to it, but yeah, I mean, the, the rules as far as, you know, having a mass influx of. You know, how do you frame that in a way that doesn't get too much into the policy discussion when you're asking the question, but at the same time saying at least, you know, is, is it something we should explore? With the right provisions.
Eric, you, back to you.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think even to like expound upon the affordability, like. Someone like my, young adult like myself. If there is an accessory dwelling unit where you're like, okay, so we can buy this house that has an accessory dwelling unit, we might be a little extended if we were just buying the house. But if you include potential rent, we're from an accessory dwelling unit, well, now maybe this is something that is. A more approachable. You know, from, from a financial perspective, right? So now, now the community is becoming more affordable for different types of people because there's different. Avenues to, to making that affordable, not just. Low, low cost buildings or small footprint housing or, or those types of things. So I, I think it. It layers in a, a component of flexibility into that, that affordability conversation that just the, the more options that you have. The more people you can attract and the more diverse your community will be in, in turn, it ends up being stronger because you don't. Homogenous communities never perform particularly well.
Mr. Cantina.
And so the, the affordability component of it, what Mr. Cluster just mentioned, I, I wholeheartedly agree with, you know, we hadn't. To this point discussed using these accessory dwelling units for that, you know, use necessarily as, as something that you could rent out. We primarily discussed it as. For, you know, even more senior members of the family, for kids, those sorts of things. But I do think that it's a very important topic that we make sure people consider as a solution to the problem, right? So there's obviously a lot of other things we need to sort out as to how we might apply the solution, but we stated the problem is. You know, not enough housing and, and the need for more housing, or at least we're at least asking the community to validate that that's what we believe is the case. And I've seen this, while we don't have the same housing crunch, I lived in the Bay area for quite some time. Where this exact scenario is what made living there affordable for many, many people in the community because otherwise. They simply would not, they would have been priced out of the entire area and, you know, their one hour commute would have been three hours at that point. So I think we absolutely have to keep it as a discussion point as a potential solution to the housing problem. And we act, we need to make sure that we keep the fact that these can be rental units for these homeowners, a viable option as well and not necessarily eliminate that.
All right. All right. Any other comments that comes, that's the end of the list, the topics there that Mr. Twing put together for us. A lot to consider there. Where do we go from here? What, well, we need, we need to look at the other two topics, right? The, you have two other, two other things you provided us, Mr. Twing. Should we?
Yeah, I, I think I can touch on those. Fairly quickly, again, what this topic was about, there's currently a. Dwelling unit standard where a home cannot exceed thirty five hundred square feet. That's the max that your living space in a single family home can. Reach in the city of Roelo. Without seeking the variance. And again, that number, I think I've told the planning commission was the result of a great deal of study from a task force. Went through an evaluation of all the, all the subdivisions in town. And all the, the homes that were on each lot and came up with standard deviations, floor area ratios. A great deal of analysis to come up with a. A maximum dwelling unit size, basically potentially for different zoning districts and different subdivisions. At the end of the day, after a couple of years of discussion on a task force level. And it involved residents, planning commissioners, city commissioners. And when everyone realized whatever provision was written would apply to everyone equally. And you couldn't point to your neighbor building a bigger house and say, no, we couldn't have that, but. No one wanted the, the standard mediation from your own neighborhood because a lot of homes. Meant they couldn't add on because you're setting the standard with lower. Where the thirty five hundred square feet came from was the end of that discussion was. That was at the time, the building code required an architect's seal on a house any bigger than that. And that's really what it was driven from after all of the time that was put into it. So that's where the standard came from. The discussion that the planning commission zoning board meeting was to look at the large lot residential zoning district. And evaluate what, how that was made up in that area and, and types of houses were in there. And what SCAF did was took each one of the areas. And highlighted and outlined in red, those parcels based on our records where. Homes exceeded thirty five hundred square feet. And you'll see it, it varies from area to area in terms of the overall number. What I would point out would be that there's, I believe, four hundred and thirty three parcels in this area. Thirty four of those are, have homes on them that exceed the thirty five hundred square feet, which I believe is. About seven, eight percent of all those parcels. I'm not sure that that's a, a significant number. I'm not sure that that's a, a significant number to justify changing that standard, but. I'm here looking for, again, direction from the planning commission as to where you want staff to go further with this evaluation.
Mr. Cantina.
I just have a quick question. Aside from the thirty-five hundred square foot max, all the properties would still be subject to lot coverage ordinance, correct?
I'm sorry, I was muted. Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that.
Mr. Curtis.
Christian Douglas actually had her hand up a lot longer than I did.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed you.
So my recollection is that the reason the zoning board brought this to our attention. Is that there are owners of properties where their house is larger than thirty-five hundred square feet. Which could suitably accommodate additional structures and still stay within the lot coverage restrictions. And yet, because their home is over thirty-five hundred square feet, they are forced to. Pay the fee, go to the zoning board in order to get that, have that change made. And my inclination is if there are only thirty-four homes in the entire city where that's an issue and. A small percentage of them are likely to want to build additional properties on their. On their site, I'm not inclined to rewrite an ordinance just for those few examples.
Mr. Curtis.
Yeah, I, I, I wasn't sure of the percentages, so that was helpful to be able to look at this visually. What I do know, sitting on the ZBA, is that it often seemed. Again, the topic of sort of. You know, one size fits all, doesn't seem right sometimes when. And, and I would include the eight hundred square feet of accessory building, like, you know, people. With a twenty thousand square foot lot. Might want a fourth car in a garage or whatever, you know, workshop in addition to a three car, you know, the, the, the accessory buildings. So the question kind of was brought up, I think, from ZBA that. Is it appropriate to just paint everything with one brush here and say, and not have some sort of stepping scale? You know, twenty thousand square foot lot can easily accommodate without violating the thirty percent coverage. More stuff on it if it was, you know. Desired and creates a, a, a bigger diversity of housing as well, right? I, I don't want. From, you know, just a community person's perspective. I would hate to run people out of town because. We held them to some standard that every lot in the, in the city was held to when they could have. On a twenty thousand square foot lot more if they wanted.
Yeah, I think it's important to understand, understand the issue. I was looking at, at some of these and some of the lots don't look that. Like they're, they're big lots, but I guess the, the, the fact is they have a larger than thirty-five hundred square foot house on them. That's not the same as the large lot issue, though. I don't know how they got. Approved for those larger houses on these smaller lots, but yeah, the, the, that's a different issue apparently. Than the large lot issue that Paul just brought up, but.
Yeah, and again, again, this net analysis was simply on those. Parcels that are zoned, a large lot residential. This isn't an analysis of every house that's over thirty-five hundred square feet in Rilo.
Other comments? All right, let's move on to the next one and.
If that's the case, then I'm going to drop this from further discussion. I'm not hearing any direction to do it.
On, on the thirty-five hundred square foot issue.
Right.
All right, having heard Mr. Twing's comment there, does anybody have further comment on that?
I guess I agree with that because our discussion today is, I guess, around what we're going to be discussing with the community as part of the.
Yes.
Possibly a town hall. Yeah, so I would agree with that, this, this gets pulled from that discussion.
All right, don't be surprised if somebody brings it up, though. All right, the next issue is the sort of. The fence, the side yard fence, which issue for corner lots, which also ties into the setbacks. But this is quite extensively illustrated and I, I tell you, there's even more types of illustrations out there, they're just everywhere, but.
Right. And, and really the issue here, I think, and, and you've got two ordinances that come into play. The zoning ordinance, which establishes what's considered the front yard of a parcel. And on corner lots, there are parcels that are considered to have two front yards on a side street. And that's the example I think Mr. Curtis brought up, where the houses face the. Major street or the, that you're dealing with one way and houses on the other, the corner, the other side street. Face that street. And so that corner lot is then treated as having two front yards. Under the zoning ordinance. Under the fence ordinance, it says you cannot have a fence taller than four feet in a front yard. And because under those illustrations where we've given you where you now have a required front yard setback. You can't put a, a taller fence in that. In either one of those two corners or, or two frontages. And we've given you illustrations on it. I, I won't run through each one of them, there's some pictures in there to show you examples of where, where they have been installed on those. We've also given illustrations on where. Somewhere situations with two front yards on the corner and the house and the garage are non-conforming because they were built. Some time ago. So the fence still can't go out past that required front yard setback. And again, there are examples and photos of those. We, we've tried to give you, I think, probably as many illustrations as. Examples of where the zoning board has dealt with some of these issues and coming up. Primarily because the zoning board serves as the appeals body under the fence ordinance now. They're not, they're not dealing with fences under the zoning ordinance. So the discussion really is, is this an issue that. Should be tweaked in the zoning ordinance? Or is this an issue that should be tweaked in the fence ordinance? Because they're both are. Being relied on here. I won't go through all the illustrations, I think, unless you've got questions on them, we tried to identify. We'll see where the last page, I believe it is. The last illustration shows. Corner lots that are back to back. They, they don't, neither one faces the side street, they're just back to back lots. And in that case, those, those side streets are considered a side yard. And they have a reduced side yard setback, it's still ten feet.
So am I correct, Mr. Twing, that if you reduced the setback on, looking at example F here? If you reduce the setback to five feet, then those properties would not require. Would be allowed to put up a six foot fence?
Yes, but you could then also build the house out to that five feet.
So, and, and similarly, or, or in that same line, what percentage of. I mean, how often does it happen when you have an example F where two houses backing up to each other? Versus an example E with a, the corner lot with the house facing, you know, the avenue and the neighbor facing the street?
The question for Mr. Twing is how frequent is that?
Right. Is example F versus example E?
Mr. Twing, if you know.
In terms of. Lot layout or in terms of number of appeals, in, in terms of, I, I guess in terms of how common is. Is what?
Lot layout, how often do we have examples like this, like?
I think that depends on what part of the city you're in. You know, the. A lot of the subdivisions are laid out, probably the newer subdivisions are laid out with back to back lots. You don't, you don't see them turned on other, where the older subdivisions may. Have longer blocks and so they've turned. The side street, so they front the side street. I guess I'd break it down that way without. Really going and looking at subdivision maps.
Yeah, I mean, my, because my sense is that there's a, a heck of a lot more F. Examples of F than there are examples of E around the city.
That's probably fair.
Okay, so here's, I mean, I, I think this is the essential question from the ZBA and Mr. Curtis can chime in at any moment here. Is how do we. Allow people to build six foot fences along their side yard without making them go to the ZBA for a variance? What's, is there, is there an easy fix here?
My, my suggestion would be that we look at the fence ordinance. To somehow address where that six foot could go. Versus changing the zoning ordinance, which may also impact where the house can go, where the garage can go. If we're simply trying to address where a six foot fence can go. I would suggest we look at the fence ordinance and see what we can tweak there.
Curtis.
Yeah, I would, I would completely agree with what you, you just said there. Because changing the zoning. Would allow. Corner lots to build, you know, within, say, five feet of the sidewalk. Which creates all sorts of hazards for traffic and, you know, backing out of garages that are on that side of, you know, street there. Not to mention the view of the neighbor, you know, say directly behind that. Gets really impacted. So I, I completely agree that it's a fence issue more than it is a zoning issue that makes sense.
And, and it may be simply to define, rather than simply pointing to the. Front yard setback in the zoning ordinance, it may be that we. Maybe define the side yard on a corner lot as being the. Narrower of the two or the longest side, so that you could put that fence on the longer side of the. Instead of, instead of the one where the house faces.
Mr. Cluster.
Can we? Is it possible to word it such that. Any yard facing the street frontage? Is, is allowed a taller fence? To address that issue?
I, I don't think you want it to come out in the true front yard of the house.
Right.
I think what we're talking about is the, the side yard of the house, the house faces the. The major, the street that it was divided on and it has a side to it. I think that's what we want to. Allow and define.
Mr. Curtis.
And if we're getting into sort of the wording, I think we really have to hold to that. Clear vision triangle issue, whatever we write with that side yard, six foot fence for safety of. Kids on skateboards or bicycles or pedestrians and what have you.
And what I can do with this topic, then, and everybody's in agreement, it should be a fence ordinance issue. The fence ordinance technically isn't something the planning commission generally. Holds a hearing on or looks at, but since you've studied it, I'd be happy to. Grab the fence ordinance and have staff look at potential changes to it. Bring it back to you next month and maybe you can simply. Send the draft to the city commission for its consideration as a recommended revision. We can go that route.
All right. Ms. Biki.
If we're looking at the, at the fence ordinance, and I think that's a good solution to this problem. It came up in that joint meeting with the zoning board of appeals. But at least one comment about the, the materials used in the fences. Again, vinyl fences are environmentally bad, just in their production and such, you know, we have wood fences. I don't know if we have a materials section in our ordinance or if we're interested in that, but if we're going to look at it, I just thought I'd mention it because it was mentioned in that previous meeting. I personally would be happy to see vinyl fences not be allowed, but I don't know, that would be just.
I, I don't know why we couldn't. Address it, we certainly, if we don't address, if we change the fence ordinance and we don't address it, we missed an opportunity. I agree with you, I don't like vinyl fences either, I do, again, it's, it's a topic for discussion. Also, I mean, this issue was brought to us because people have privacy concerns or, because their, their house, unlike. Unlike everybody else on the street who can do the patio and the gazebo or whatever, and they're behind the house away from the traffic, the people on the side street. Just to be clear about the issue. Are just a few feet away from passing cars and, and passing pedestrians and they're looking to create some privacy, so. You know, you, 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 you start writing these ordinances and. Sometimes the purpose gets lost, but that's my understanding is that's the purpose of it, to allow people to create a, a area of privacy where. They are exposed in a way that their neighbors are not. And so. That's, that's the problem we're trying to solve, Mr. Curtis.
And I would just add to it, it becomes a bit of a sticky wicket, I think, for the zoning board of appeals. As they try to offer relief. When do they offer relief and when do they not offer relief and is, is there a way to continue to apply a, a consistent standard? Because you need a consistent standard. Well, it gets fixed if the. If the fence ordinance is changed in such a way as they don't see these appeals all the time.
All right. Any other comments on that? We would look forward to Mr., this, this. Does the commission, is that our direction to Mr. Twing and the department to, to take a stab at a, at a draft text amendment? The fence ordinance? Commissioner Douglas says yes, it's not, not really a, I don't think we're taking a vote, we're just getting a sense of it, it looks like Mr. Curtis is in favor, I guess I would be in favor too. So I think that's your direction, Mr. Mr. Twing.
Understood.
All right. So that does leave us with the question, though, we, we answered that one, but where do we, we go from here, we, I think the lot, I'm sorry, not the lot size, the thirty-five hundred square foot issue. We're not, we don't consider that a pressing issue, that's. Going to be dropped for now for emphasis. So that goes back to the series of potential survey questions. That we talked about a little ways back here and where do we go from here? I think we need to have a discussion and I think. The department is looking for some feedback if we, and, and we've given some feedback, but go ahead.
Well, my understanding was that you wanted to hear from Judy Davis. And so I would invite her to come to your next meeting and talk about how we would do the community outreach. And you can look at the questions during that time, some of which you've told me are policy issues and we would take those out. And so I'll do a new document, striking those out, just so you know what we took out, bring that back to next meeting. And in talking with Judy, maybe we'll have some sort of. Of game plan. I, I also want to talk to IT about how we would do a digital. Or remote town hall meeting and, and can we do that? With our, with our current setup and how we would work through that, so. What I read were those items and I'd bring all that back to you hopefully next month for your. Thumbs up or tweaks or thumbs down and further directions, so that, that's what I got, I, I. I, I felt comfortable with that direction. So that's what I got. I felt comfortable with that direction unless there's something else.
Any comments from the commissioners? That sound about right? Mr. Curtis.
Yeah, I like it a lot, but maybe there's some more thought. I guess we could email Mr. Twing about, are there any other thoughts about the specifics of these?
Absolutely.
I think you're entitled to convince with them all you want. Don't know what will happen, but you can convince. Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I'm emailing, I sent this to you, Mr. Casada, I'm going to email everybody else, an article, an online article about successful online community engagement.
All right, thank you. All right, anything else on discussion topics from the joint meeting with the zoning board of appeals before we move on? All right, seeing none, the next item on the agenda is the election of officers. So the bylaws or the rules of procedure say that the first, the February meeting of every year, we have an election of officers. Right now, we're operating without a vice chair, but we would need to proceed with electing both a chair and a vice chair. And I haven't done this before. I think the procedure is that they would take nominations for these, and then we would have a vote, a discussion and a vote on them. I don't know if I need any guidance from Mr. Twing or Mr. List on that.
Generally, the boards open the floor for nominations. And then there's, once all the nominations are received, you have the nominations closed, and then there's a vote on the nomination. So you could do both the chair and the vice chair at one nomination, or you could separate them.
All right, then I will open the floor for nominations. Mr. Douglas.
I nominate Gary Casada as chair.
You? Any other nominations?
I move, we close nominations and elect Mr. Casada by a claim.
A second, all right. All right, appreciate that. How do we proceed? We just?
I do a roll call still.
Okay, we'll do a roll call. Mayor Fournier.
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Klooster.
Yes.
Ms. Bicki.
Sorry, my internet was going, we're voting for you? Yes.
All right, Mr. Gantina.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes.
All right, I guess I'll vote for myself. All right, motion passes. Thank you. I'll serve another year. Thank you. How about nominations for a vice chair? Who would we like to nominate? I'm opening the floor.
Does anyone want to nominate themselves? Who's interested?
Well, if nobody's getting nominated, I can nominate, I'm going to nominate Ms. Bicki.
Oh, no.
Yeah, that's what happens when you should have preempted that, Ms. Bicki.
Any other nominations? All right, well, seeing none, are you willing to serve, Ms. Bicki?
What's hers?
Oh, you froze.
She's frozen and surprised.
She left the meeting.
My internet is so bad, maybe I cannot do it. I'm missing the discussion.
The question was, are you willing to serve? You know, this is how I ended up chair, is that I wasn't. I'm going to move for the vote here, I think, unless there's any objection to that.
There a second?
I'll second.
For, yes, several seconds. We had seconds. All right, so I'm going to move for the vote here. Mayor Fournier.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Klooster.
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Bicki.
I literally don't know what we're voting for because my internet went out.
You don't need to know. We're voting for you for vice chair.
Okay, I'll say yes with timid nature.
Okay, well, you froze when I asked if you were willing to serve. I should have not nominated without asking beforehand, but nobody was nominating anybody.
That's okay. I will vote yes.
Okay. And that means we go to Mr. Gantina.
Yes.
And Mr. Curtis.
If Ann says yes, I say yes.
And I say yes. Okay, so you're the new vice chair. All right, congratulations. All right, what's next on the agenda? All right, these are the non-action items. Mr. Twing, can you take us through those real quick?
Just pursuant to state law, you have two notices of intent regarding master plans from other communities. They're simply required to provide those notices as if, when Roylo chooses to redo theirs, we'll provide notices as well. There's no action required there. And the last one was simply a copy of the Michigan plan for December and November. So there's no action on any of those, just information.
Okay, so I just want to say, so these two cities, I actually didn't look at these real quick. Are they doing a full master plan review or?
Well, at this point, it's a notice that they're at least doing a portion of it, so.
All right, any comments about these non-action items by the commissioners? Mr. Curtis.
For my own edification, could somebody tell me, once that notice has been offered by a city such as Madison Heights or the city of Southfield, is there a time restriction on when they must complete that? Does that start a clock?
Not in terms of their completion. There's a time period for comments to come back to them from the adjacent communities, but they can take as long as they need to to complete it.
All right, a good question. All right, that is the end of the agenda. Are there any other comments that people want to make before we seek a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Douglas.
I just briefly want to point out that you all may not realize it, but Ms. Bicki consults with cities around the globe through the ICMA, and is an excellent choice as our vice chair. So congratulations, Ann.
Thank you.
She looks very excited.
Congratulations, Ann, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I used to do that full-time. I don't do that full-time now, but I have done it for many, many years. I do have one other comment, if I may.
Yes.
I, oh, see, again, I'm frozen.
No, we can hear you.
You're good.
We're probably frozen to her.
Maybe we're frozen for you, but we heard you. I don't think she's convinced.
Okay, I don't know if I'm.
Frozen now. I think she's.
We can hear you now.
You can hear me now?
Yes.
Last thing, the state of Michigan is going to be updating its uniform building code. And in Michigan, local governments are prohibited from doing more than the building code requires, which I think inhibits our good practices. And so I, for one, I don't know if the city ever takes a stand on this, but I'll be communicating with various entities to try to encourage removing that clause from the universal building code for Michigan, because it's a big problem if we want to improve our insulation requirements or simple things. And so we have sort of a bottom level standard in Michigan, and we're not allowed to go beyond it. And I think it would be good to try to persuade our government to change that and take that clause out. I can send a note via email about that to you.
Okay, please do.
I can address that briefly. That is actually advocacy like that is something that the environmental advisory board is taking up as part of our work on the sustainability plan.
All right.
Okay, I'll include them, too, then. I mean, you, the rest of the committee.
And Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I serve on the Michigan Municipal League's Policy Committee on Economic Development and Planning and Land Use. This may or may not fall in that, under that committee, but it falls under some committee. So I'm sending off an email to the staffer for this committee to find out, you know, where that's housed and how the MML will address it.
All right, well, I assume that this process will not be overnight, and there'll be an opportunity for public comment as well as other lobbying efforts. But there will be a public comment, period, I assume, yes?
Typically, there is.
Yeah. All right, very good. I wouldn't be, Mr. Klooster.
Yeah, in the state of Michigan, we still have the 2015 building code. They just published the 2021, so nothing's going to happen very fast, I don't think.
All right. Okay, very good. Any other comments on any topic, really? All right, seeing none, I encourage, our next topic is adjournment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a second. Mr. Klooster, all right. I think we can take a vote for adjournment. Mayor Fournier.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Klooster.
Yes.
Ms. Bicki.
Yes.
Mr. Gantina.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes, thank you.
And thank you, and I vote yes, so we are adjourned. Look forward to getting those communications about these issues that we just talked about. And we'll look forward to seeing you next month. Thank you.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Have a good night, everybody.